Welcome to the Pickens County Republican Primary Debate. This debate is designed to give our citizens a better understanding of our candidates for office. This debate will be livestreamed and recorded so that later on you can get a better reception of it as well. We will begin with the candidates for the Board of Education since these seats are at large. The Board of Education debate will be done at the same time for Post 1 and Post 4. So, welcome and we hope that this debate will certainly give you all, our citizens, and me myself as a citizen, a little bit better understanding of the candidates that are running for office. And certainly if you're undecided, I ask you to pay close attention to the questions and pay close attention to each one of their answers. I'm going to give a short introduction of each one of our candidates. So we'll begin with Matthew O'Brien. He is 27 years old. He's been a resident of Pickens County all but five of those years and is employed by Allen Horn State Farm. Donna Ennis, she has retired from teaching. She's been a resident of Pickens County for most of her life. Mr. Tommy Gartrill, lifelong resident of Pickens County, farmer and a business professional. Sue Finley, she's lived in Pickens County for 20 years, calling Pickens for 15, and since then retired for five years and a board member for three and a half years. Mr. Pence, Chris Pence, he's a professional fireman. He's been a volunteer fireman in Pickens County for 15 years. He owns a home improvement company and a partner in a real estate firm. So with those introductions, we certainly thank each one of the candidates for coming and we thank you for tuning in live and no pickings. And certainly appreciate the Pickens County Republican Party for being able to put this all together. So we'll begin with Matthew O'Brien. Mr. O'Brien, the questions that we have for you this evening are, we'll begin with you and then we'll go down the line. Each candidate will have three minutes to answer each question and there will be a one-minute rebuttal time for each one of the candidates as well. So first question, Mr. O'Brien. What do you understand your responsibilities to be as a board member of the Pickens County school system?
So the biggest thing, and I've stressed this in several paper articles and things like that, is on the boards you want to be the intermediate between the community and what they want to voice and what gets put into force in the school systems. And part of that is going to be staffing the school system the correct way. As we've seen recently, that can cause issues as well as on the other end not hearing the voice of the community to know how to relay that into your decision-making. So that's where I feel like my main focus needs to be is that intermediate there to make sure the voice is heard and translated into the school system primarily.
Ms. Ennis, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes.
What do you understand your responsibilities to be as a board member of the Pickens County school system?
As a board member, your main responsibility is to build a policy and a budget. And so, you know, a lot of people have the misconception that you can go in and really do a lot of, have a lot of input as far as what goes on, but we're not allowed to have anything to do with day-to-day operations. So, you know, once you get in there, you figure out real quick that you really can't say a whole lot about things and you certainly can't, you know, talk to employees and things like that and try to help make decisions. I mean, we're there for support. The superintendent brings it to us and, you know, we either say yes or no. And then that budget, and we do get input from stakeholders on that, but, I mean, the board sometimes does, people do have a view that, you know, we can do more than we really can.
Mr. Gartrill? Would you repeat the question, please? What do you understand your responsibilities to be as a board member of the Pickens County school system?
As a board member, you're the voice of the community to the school system. You'll be in charge of firing and giving goals to the superintendent and being in the community, communicating with people and relating that to the school system and in a position of leadership for the administration in the school. You will have a duty to approve jobs each year, to set a budget, and budget's a big thing. That's going to be very tough, I think, in the coming weeks because of the current economy. Responsible, measured, planned budgeting is going to be extremely important from here on out.
Ms. Finley?
Yes, sir.
May I repeat the question?
No, that wouldn't be necessary. Thank you. The two primary jobs of the Board of Education are to develop policy and budget. It's already been said. And I'd like to piggyback off what Mr. O'Brien said. We are, we can be the ears for the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. Sometimes folks feel a little more comfortable talking to us than they might with folks in the central office just because you might feel intimidated or something. If folks ask us for information, it's best to tell them, "You need to call the superintendent or whatever person is responsible for this, ask them," so that we're not involved in day-to-day operations. But it is good for us, I believe, to be the ears for the community and to listen to the concerns. And I, there have been many times when I've talked to the superintendent and said, "This is the word on the street. This is what I'm hearing. Not telling you what to do. I'm just giving you information." And that's good for them and it's good for us to know what the community feels like, but it's good for the superintendent as well.
Mr. Pence?
Well, I think as the board, there's a very fine line that you have to walk between interfering with day-to-day operation and oversight. Our biggest responsibility is to be responsible to the taxpayers for our budget and do budget oversight. I think that's one of the things that has been overlooked. There has been a lot of misspending that has gone on that does not affect our kids. And our number-one goal as a board is the student and to take care of that student and to be the voice for the student and the parents. And of course, picking the right superintendent and giving him guidance, you know, letting him know where he stands. And I don't feel that that was one of the things that was done before. You have to be able to guide the superintendent in the way that the board sees fit in the policies that the board has made and make sure that he's carrying out those policies.
Rebuttal. Seeing no rebuttal, we'll move on to the next question and we'll begin with Ms. Ennis at this time. Second question, given the circumstances our community and the rest of the country facing with regards, excuse me, given the circumstances our community and rest of the country is facing with regards to COVID-19, what are your plans to help keep our kids healthy for the upcoming school year in 2020, 2021?
You know, that's kind of a loaded question, but, you know, this is a very unique situation that we've never faced before. And our number-one responsibility is the safety of our children and our employees. You know, it seems like every week, you know, the regulations change maybe and what we're allowed to do and what we need to do, that changes. And we have very good people in place that are daily keeping up with the changes and the procedures. So that is going to be something that we're going to have to really kind of monitor from now until the time school starts. But I feel like that our staff just really came on and did an incredible job by, you know, we had planned to be out for two weeks and do online learning and it ended up being two and a half months. So you've got our staff, our kids, our parents, all had to throw in and really kind of just make this work and they did. If for some reason that we can't go back in the fall and we're having to do this distance training again, I think that we're going to refine it and try to make it better. There's always room for improvement, but the safety's going to be first. And I know that right now we're kind of getting our feet wet with things reopening, but, you know, it's a big concern. And I'm going to tell you, the safety of our kids and our staff is going to come first. And we will do, you know, whatever we need to do to ensure that the safety's there, ensure that they're getting the learning and really if we have to continue this, we're going to tweak it to try to make it the best that we can make it. There may be other options that we can do. You know, there's just a variety of options that, you know, I really don't want to go into because, you know, it might be on the table or might not. But I think that we're going to have to look at different options to keep everyone safe.
Mr. Gartrill?
Well, as Donna said, this is brand-new territory for everybody worldwide.
Mr. Gartrill, can you speak back a little bit?
This is a brand-new situation for the entire world that we're in right now with the COVID-19. You know, I'm not an infectious disease expert, but we're in contact with some. The school system's in contact. The government in general's in contact and we have to do a lot of our decision-making based on the information we're getting there and the information data being gathered around the world. It's not an easy fix, but if it's not safe, we're not going to put our kids or our staff in danger, period.
Ms. Finley?
I agree with Ms. Ennis. Our administrators are already looking at various scenarios for the fall. I don't believe that it's prudent for us to say in August we will do such-and-such because it is a big question mark this summer as to whether the things will settle in or if they're going to, you know, get worse, as some folks think. I know for a fact that teachers have already been directed to develop assessments for their students as they go on to the next grade to help those next-year teachers tell if these students, if there are any gaps in their education, anything that needs to be remediated before they can go on to, you know, and work on the material for the next grade. Safety is first. We'll do what we have to do. We will not endanger our students or our teachers or any of the staff. We'll just have to see what the summer brings and make the best decision we possibly can and we will.
Mr. Pence?
Well, first, I want to say how grateful I am to the teachers through this process. We basically, as a society, told them, "By tomorrow, you need to figure out how to do something you've never done before." And I know there were some hiccups that happened, but I think overall it was as successful as we could do on such a short notice. As far as opening backup, we have to depend on the experts, like Mr. Gartrill said. So we need to follow CDC, state health recommendations, along with the governor. If the governor says that we're still in lockdown, then that's what we have to abide by because the safety of our kids is number one. We have to not only protect the kids, but staff coming in, visitors to the school system we have to protect. So we're really depending on experts to tell us how to go forward.
Mr. O'Brien?
I don't want to try and restate anything. It's already been touched on. Everyone's made clear this is kind of an uncertain area for everyone involved. Unfortunately, one thing that does mean though is there's not always a right and wrong answer in these situations. And because of that, if a decision's made and the public doesn't like it, there's going to have to be a little back and forth there. That's where we're going to kind of have to rely, like everyone said, on the experts to give us some guidance and then to continue to make the decisions from there based on what we see. And that's going to be really important for us moving forward is the ability to deal with that and based off, you know, base those decisions from what we're experiencing in our love. In addition to that one thing that kind of goes hand-in-hand with this, you know, hopefully we will get to see the students go back to school before too long. And something that had been brought to me repeatedly, it kind of shocked me because it was not something that I saw so much when I was still in the Pickens school system, was some of the just uncleanliness in the schools, even lack of hot water in a couple of bathrooms. And this was something I'd hoped to get to, you know, go in as a visitor and maybe see or experience, have some personal knowledge on this. Unfortunately, with schools being closed the last two and a half months, I've not had a chance to dig into it any deeper. But definitely moving forward, if the students are allowed to go back, maybe hygiene needs to be a little deeper concern. And that's what I'd like to add to that. I think we've pretty well talked on that point.
Any rebuttal? Hearing none, we'll move on. We'll begin with Mr. Gartrill. Third question. To all candidates, previously on the Board of Education or not, reflecting on the way circumstances that ultimately resulted in the resignation of Dr. Wilson were handled, would you have done anything differently? And that would begin with Mr. Gartrill.
That's personnel matter. Personnel matters are confidential. I don't know that I can speak to that indeligently because the board did everything by the book in executive session. I don't officially know what happened or why there was a change made. I would like to know, but none of us officially know because that's confidential information.
Ms. Finley?
The video of our board meeting is available online if anybody wants to watch that, but more than that, I really can't address that either. Executive session and personal matters are strictly confidential. Would I have done anything differently personally? No, I don't believe so. I would have, if I had to make the vote today, I would vote the same way. I'd feel the same way as I did then. As I said at the meeting in public comments, unfortunately, I was not in the majority. And that's the way boards work. Majority rules. One of the things I will say, I have heard a couple of folks criticize the fact that our board is fractured and we don't get along and that sort of thing. For the most part, we get along fine and we do agree. The Dr. Wilson issue was a tremendous disagreement. I totally disagreed with it, but that was something that I felt very strongly about and so I did vote against the majority. But for the most part, behind closed doors, we do work together and I believe if at all possible, that it's important to say, "Okay, we're going out there and we are united and that's the way we are." But we're not rubber stamps either. And I think we owe it to our community to vote as we, the best we possibly can. If all, if all we're supposed to do is to present a 5-0 vote every time, every decision, then there's no need to have five of us. We'll just have one person and let them, you know, rule the roost. But that's not how it works. And I think sometimes when it's a very, when it's something that's very important to someone, whether it's me or anybody else on the board, if they feel that strongly about it, I believe they should vote their conscience. Most of the time, we can work things out and say, "Well, I think it should be this way and that way." Let me give you, if I have time, let me give you one example. With the previous board, we were, in talking about remodeling and that sort of thing and how we would handle some construction issues, we talked about reconfiguring our school systems, our schools. And when I went in, of course, I had an idea of how it should be done. Of course, my way was right. But everybody else that came in with their ideas thought they had the best idea as well. When we sat down, the five of us together and talked, it was all low-key, very respectful, when we talked and considered each person's ideas and kicked it around, we came out with a totally different product. None of us expected. None of us went in with this idea.
Moving to Mr. Pence?
Well, I agree with what Mr. Gartrill said. I was not in executive session. If I would have been in the executive session, I would have had the information presented to me and I'd have made a decision that way. So as far as speaking to it and not having the information that the two current board members in the room had, I can't speak to it. And if I was a current board member, I still couldn't speak to it because it is a personnel matter. Nobody would want their employment decision out in public. And that's not something that the board would ever do. You can't discuss employment matters out in the public. And I would, I would stick with that just like the current board has done. I do think that some of the board members came out and said they didn't quite understand why he was dismissed. And I can tell you that if I was sitting in that meeting, I would not have left the executive session until I was clear of why he was being asked to resign. Whether I agreed with his, accepting his resignation or not, I would at least have the information that was brought forth to make an informed vote.
Mr. O'Brien?
Sue, first of all, thank you for the insight coming from the inside of the board there. That's something I feel like a lot of people miss is what it takes to actually make five people work together on something like that, especially the issue we dig as the school superintendent. You're never going to have everybody's viewpoints aligned, but as a board, that is your responsibility to try and get to a point where you work together. And as, you know, all three of us being outsiders looking in at that point, we can't necessarily speak to the employment end of that. The one thing though that I have hopefully been very clear about the whole way through this though is at least from what I saw, the community had a large view on this. Their community was very involved during this decision, to the point that it was even put to a vote at the end of the meeting that I believe you were talking about. And what I thought was very clear, what should have been very clear to the board is what was being asked of them was taken almost as a joke, for lack of a better term. And that really would be the one thing I could see maybe changing in there is opening that up more to the community because it felt like there was no light shed on the matter until it was almost over with. The decision was made before anyone from the outside had a chance to even be a part of that as a community. And that really was a large part of what has put me here, so it's something I feel more strongly about. That's really, like they said, that's all I feel like I can weigh in on that, having not been in the seat myself at the time.
Ms. Ennis?
Well, you know, Thomas Hurst off, you know, right? It is a personnel issue. It's a confidential issue. You know, we're not allowed, you know, by law to talk about executive session outside of the room. You know, the only thing I can say is that no matter what the decision is or what we're voting on, I'm always going to go with what I feel like is the right thing for our system. You know, I put the school system first and sometimes, you know, it might not be a popular decision, it might not be, you know, what people want, but, you know, you have to look at the big picture. And when you look at the big picture and, you know, if you put the system first instead of yourself first, that, you know, that's sometimes a tough decision. But, you know, we just can't, no matter what decision it is, we can't go out and talk about it. And so, you know, I think that's why people, you know, vote the board in, is you've got to have some trust that, you know, that the decisions are being made for the best interest of the school system. And so, you know, I just ask for people's trust, knowing that, you know, in my heart, I'm going to do what I feel like is the best thing for our kids and our staff and our school system moving forward.
Any rebuttal?
I'd like to say something, please. I understand what you mean about you would not leave that room until you knew why. I was given, we were given a reason that I can't tell you, but I didn't feel that it was an adequate reason for letting someone go or encouraging them to resign, however you want to put it. It just wasn't, it wasn't enough to warrant the action that was taken. That was the only reason that was given and I have, I have my thoughts as to what the real reason might be, but I can't, don't really need to say that either right now. Something you said I was going to say, but, yeah. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Moving on to the next question, we'll begin with Ms. Finley. Be the fourth and final question before we have closing remarks. What do you perceive to be the biggest issue in our school system and what recommendations would you make to address this issue?
I think the biggest issue in our school system is teacher morale. It was an issue when I first came in because several people that I know of personally had been told and had heard of others that, you know, "You're expendable. We'll get somebody else in." And I have a whole drawer full of applications. When Dr. Wilson was hired, the teachers knew him and they were, they felt, they felt safe again. And now, I think, not that they feel unsafe now, but they are a little unsettled. Even though I did vote against Dr. Townsend, I explained to him and I put it on Facebook that I was voting no because I felt that we had a good local candidate, a fantastic local candidate that would do a great job. That's why I voted no. Dr. Townsend has my full support. Our students deserve the very best and I will do everything I can to make Dr. Townsend successful. I think he's a great, going to be a great superintendent. So I think the teacher morale issue will subside again. I think it will be okay, but I think right now, teacher morale is what's most important.
Mr. Pence?
Well, I actually think one of our biggest issues has changed. Since the COVID-19, the school system is going to be looking at about a 14% budget cut from the state. And so I think one of our main concerns is being fiscally solvent as a school system. I do think that having somebody that is an outsider coming in as a superintendent during this time is actually an advantage because he doesn't have any loyalties or things that he feels he has to pay back to somebody and so he can make informed decisions and not let his personal feelings come into play. And we have to make sure that when it comes down to this issue, that we are going to look at the budget like we were making a cake. The cake part would be our students and we have to be student-focused. So those that are closest to the students are the ones that we've got to make sure that have what they need and that's our teachers. They have to be able to have what they need. We don't have enough teachers as there is, so cutting teachers' positions, we can't do. Everything else, the icing on the cake, the sparklers, sprinkles, candles, we don't have to do that. We just need a cake. So during this financial difficulty, it is going to be some really hard decisions that the superintendent is going to have to make and bring to the board with the budget. And there's going to be decisions that he makes that are not popular whatsoever just because of the financial hardship that we're in. And I fully expect that the state would come back and possibly cut the budget even more come July. I think that we may see as a county, a 20% or more cut to our funding from the state and that's a serious hit to our budget. Because we don't get any of the equalization grant, the state money that we as taxpayers paid to the state, we don't get the equalization grant. So that puts us at a disadvantage. For instance, Gwinnett County gets, basically our entire school budget, they get over $50 million in equalization grant money and we don't get that. So the budget is going to be the most difficult thing going forward. I think, I think the board and the superintendent are going to have very tough decisions coming up.
Mr. O'Brien?
I think we've all touched on enough issues tonight. The overall problem is just a general instability at this point. We don't really have enough information yet to know where we're going with coming school year. We don't really know where we're going with the COVID issue. And now we added, you know, a big change right prior to that with a new superintendent, which, like you mentioned, creates instability for the teachers. So overall, we've got a lot of things we don't really have answers to. And the best thing we can do for that is focus on getting who we think is going to make the best decision moving forward during these times in the right position. moving forward during these times in the right positions. Because really the overall is just going to be the accomplishment of all these problems causing that instability. And that's going to be the biggest issue we face in the coming years.
Mr. Pence.
I feel like there's two issues. I think budget and I think academics. You know, we've, we've been basically homeschooled for two and a half months. Our, our teachers are having to teach in a different way. And we talked about it earlier tonight, is that, you know, we're looking at a possibility of having to do that distance learning even longer. And you can't teach the same way, you know, through a, a virtual classroom as you can hands-on in classroom. It is very different. So to me, you know, the academics, and I'm not a, I'm not a big fan of test scores. I don't believe, you know, that a kid is a, a test score. I think that you've got to develop the whole child. I, I think that the extracurriculars are so important. That, that contributes to academics. But this spring, these seniors, you know, unfortunately have missed out a lot. But not only the seniors, you've got every kid that had, you know, things planned for the spring. I mean, they, they lost that. And so now, you know, we're going to have to try to bring that enthusiasm back with them. But we're also going to have to figure out ways that we can reach those kids through other ways that extracurriculars and, and, and just that one-on-one attention. So I, I think the academics is a huge concern and how we deal with it from here on forward. And I think that the budget, I mean, Mr. Pence really, really, you know, made some good points there. But, you know, the, the number one priority is making sure these kids get what they need and, and these teachers. And, you know, we've talked about teachers, you know, feeling safe. And, and we've got to, you know, assure these teachers that, you know, we're, you know, we're going to do everything we can to keep those teachers in the classroom, to keep the support paid in the classroom. And, and so, you know, the, the budget, we're going to be dictated a little bit by the state cuts. We don't really know what we're going to get locally yet. But I just think that we've got to figure out a way that we can increase our academics with the situation that we're in right now. I think that's our immediate issue is our situation, how we're going to ensure that each kid is getting that individual help and, and education that they need.
Mr. Gartrill.
I think the biggest problem right now is just the instability period. I think everybody's touched on that with COVID-19, but going back before it hit, stability has been a problem in the system for a while. Our lowest performing school is on their fourth administrator in six years. That's a problem. The teacher runs out, the children run settled. And then you add all this whole changes in board every two years, changes in superintendent every two years. It's just, it's just revolving door. Nobody gets a chance to get their feet under them, get settled. And a huge thing, and adding to what Donna said, the learning from home. Parents, we need you to get involved. We need you to encourage your children to spend that time if we have to continue that. That's a, a whole community working together. That's what we take under those circumstances. Aside from that, we've got a new superintendent. Let's get behind him, let's support him. All of us, every single person in Pickens County, there's 32,000 shareholders in our school system. Everybody should be involved if it's just a word of encouragement. But we need to calm down, slow down, figure out these problems, get people in place that do the job, get these schools performing strongly again, even though test is not the final answer and the ultimate measuring stick of our schools. I mean, those test scores are going to accept well. And that, that to me is the biggest problem right now.
Any other vote?
I'd like to kind of build off of what both of them said about test scores and the, unfortunately, that's one of the ways that we have to judge our kids. We should have a better metric because it's not just a test. Because what ends up happening is, no matter how good of a teacher you are, you start teaching to that test. You, you were focused on test scores. And as a school system, if you start testing, focusing completely on test scores, I don't think you get a well-rounded student. We need to make sure that our kids are able to take the knowledge that they learn in the classroom and apply it outside. And whether that is getting the community more involved, like Tommy was saying, as far as getting businesses and getting partnerships with them and working with them and having students do internships where they actually get to put what they learn in the classroom to work.
Any other vote? Here none. We will then, we will now proceed to closing statements explaining to the citizens of our county of why you feel that you're the best person for the job that you're running for. And since we had four questions and we began with a different person each time and Mr. Pence didn't get to begin, we'll begin with him in all fairness this time.
Thank you. So as many of you out there know, I'm a longtime resident here. I went to school in Pickens County. I'm a business owner, so I have a, a financial vision that maybe is lacking as far as we go forward with this budget cuts. I've also served on a local private schools board, and I served on that board during the last financial crisis. So I know what it takes to get through this. I had that experience and I had those tough decisions come across us as a board. And I know how it feels whenever you're making decisions on, on people's livelihoods and, and not only that, but on your students. Because every decision that you make financially is going to impact a student, whether it's for the positive or the negative. But as the, as a board member, I plan to work with the leadership that is in place now to help build a better school. We're currently ranked around 50% on our school and we're spending more money than the average. So if we're spending $2,000 per kid more, we should be higher than 50% of them. I plan to support education from the bottom up, supporting our teachers, giving them what they need to be able to succeed and for our students to succeed. Plan to increase transparency. I think that was one of the things that a lot of people in the community were worried about. Not only transparency from, from the board, but from the school system itself as far as parents being able to get the information that they need to decide what is best for their student. I also want to investigate and implement a tax exemption. And I know that's probably not going to be something that's talked about here tonight with budget concerns, but for 20 years, we've put a burden on some of our elderly and most vulnerable people to keep paying the school tax while we kept spending and growing the school budget. We need to be looking at an actual exemption that takes it to about $37,000. And that just increases it over what inflation is. I plan to ensure that policies are in place that give guidance to our students and to the school administration of where, as a board, we want to go. I want to work towards a increased partnership with business leaders so that we can get our kids into the schools or from the schools into the workforce and make them job-ready. When they leave the high school, if, if they want to go do something, we have them everything they need to go forth, whether it's to go to college, to technical school.
Thank you. Next will be Mr. O'Brien.
I, I'm fortunate that I sit in a unique position right now. 27, roughly nine and a half years removed from the Pickens County school system myself. I grew up in it, spent my entire grade school career there. And because of that, I'm not so far removed that I don't still relate to a lot of the issues the kids are going to have now. Obviously, what's going on with COVID is a different story. That's going to be special to them for some time to come. But as far as able to address specific issues in the school system, I sit in a good place for that. But at the same time, I'm also not young or naive enough to be completely inexperienced. There's, you know, always things anybody can learn as they go at any age, but I've had a chance to, you know, grow and understand things that I think I could bring to the school board to really benefit it. One of those things being working to unite both the school board with the community and back the school system in a way that gets things moving forward in the direction they need to. I think an open door policy and a good use of communication go a long way there. In addition, something I'd like to add on, he briefly touched on it there, is something that's really important right now is giving kids a guidance as to what happens after, after their time in the school system. We're seeing a lot of kids now, they get out and they think either college is the end-all, be-all, and they don't make it, or they don't know where to go into the workforce. And if we would give, find a way to give an opportunity moving into that to experience those things before they have to make that decision at 18 years old, I think we would see a lot of improvement across the board as for what we should really be using as a metric and that's their success after they get out of our school system.
Thank you. Mr. Pence.
Well, I retired after 30 years of teaching and coaching. And, you know, speaking of coaching, I, you know, spent my whole career building teams up and, and learning how to lead teammates and leading teams. And, you know, the, the board is, is a team and we, we work together as a team. Our whole school system is a team. So when you look at it that way, I, you know, I've got a lot of experience in that. I've got two advanced degrees. You know, I, I have lived. I mean, my parents were teachers. I grew up in an educator's, you know, house. My, my dad was a superintendent here. And so, I mean, I, I've just, that's what I've grown up in is education. And I look at it from a teacher's standpoint. I know that we've talked a little bit about budget tonight. I, I lived through the days that teachers were furloughed. And let me tell you, that is the worst feeling in the world. And that'll be one of the things that I'll do my best to see that we, we don't do. I mean, we've got to find something besides furloughing teachers. So, I mean, that's, that would be the very last resort because I, I tell you, that is not something pleasant to live through. But, you know, I've also, you know, been a teacher through times that were really prosperous. So, you know, you go through those waves of, of the economy. But I'm just, I'm a big supporter of, of teachers and kids and what it takes to get those kids educated. You know, I, when I was, you know, asked to fill out the, the remaining term here, you know, I, I sat down and I looked at it and I just feel like that so many people helped me in my career to be successful. And I felt like that this was a way for me to give back to the community. Being retired, I had the time to invest. I had the time to, to do whatever is needed to be done. And so I feel like this is just a way to help the community and give back to the community that was so gracious to me and, and helped me. But, you know, I just want to say that, you know, I, I want, I want to do this as a service. I'm going to do the best I can. I'll always do what I feel like is right. But I am open and listen and, and try to weigh decisions. And that will be the most beneficial for, for our system moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Gartrill.
With that, you have a lot of background. I'd like to ask everybody to go to my Facebook page and look at my biography and find out a little bit more and use this time to discuss a few things that are important to me. I've been involved with a lot of scholarship committees and we see the upper 10, 20% of our student body. We don't get a very good look at those kids who are just barely getting by. I think we need to be looking at them. And I think we need to be helping them now by teaching them some life skills. They need to understand basic banking fundamentals, how to do a tax return, how a credit score works, how to acquire a job, interviewing skills. Some of those things will help these people who are not scholastically minded be functional adults in the workplace. I'd also like to tell you, I really am just a simple little farm boy that grew up in Pickens County and I went off to school, got a pretty decent job, spent a long career with Coca-Cola, among other industries. And I would like to serve you and get back to the time that teachers spent on me because I was not an easy job to deal with, I assure you. And it's starting now and I would humbly ask for your vote for this board. Thank you.
Ms. Finley.
Yes, sir. In this time of transition, changes, instability, I think it's important to have continuity on the school board. At three and a half years of experience, I'm the oldest member of the school board. And I think continuing to have some gray hair on the school board is not a bad thing. I've been through some difficult things that we've already alluded to and can handle it. I've taught for 15 years in this school system. I love this school system. I love this town. The kids are wonderful and I do have a heart for the teachers. I do know how budget cuts, how the budget and policy impacts the classroom and impacts the teachers. I am open and honest, sometimes too much so, according to some of my colleagues. But I'll tell you what I think. You may not like it, but I'll tell you what I think. And I, but I can work collaboratively and I have a lot of experience with that as far as teaching and being on various teams and that sort of thing. It's important. Collaboration is so key and that's something that I can do as well. You mentioned increasing transparency and that, that is important. I think this board is very transparent. We have, we have personnel who write articles for the newspaper. The, all you have to do is call the central office, you know, and you can certainly leave a message or an email for the superintendent. But more than that, when I first became a, a board member, I put my phone number, my cell number on Facebook. My email address is on county website. I have, anybody that wants to, that sends me a message, however, I'm, I'm more than happy to give them my phone number and talk to them. Talking about our, our high school students who may have, may not know where to go after they graduate. One of the things that we have instituted in the last several years, which I think is a tremendous program, is dual enrollment. And that, Mr. Bell works very hard to see that all of our students are connected in some way. And college is not for everyone. It certainly isn't. And we need, we need our FFA people. We need good farmers. We need a lot of other professions. And Mr. Bell has worked very hard to get that. And a lot of students do part of their day at the high school, part of their day at the tech school and come out and have, have a, a good degree or certification. We also encourage them to do apprenticeships. Thank you.
We thank you for joining us. This will conclude our Board of Education debate for post one and post four. We thank each one of our candidates for attending. We appreciate your time. We thank you for your cordiness. Certainly appreciate your politeness and we thank you Pickens County citizens for tuning in. And we would ask that you tune back in in just a little while for our debate for Tax Commissioner. Thank you.